A button there.
Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call and see that all council members are present. We'd like to thank those of you who are with us, that are here tonight with us in the audience, as well as any who may be watching us tonight on City 56. Would like to begin this evening with invocation of this council member Kelly if he'd lead us in invocation followed by pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Kukavas. Those who'd like to join with us tonight, please stand.
Our Father in Heaven, dear Lord, I thank you for the very privilege that you give myself and the rest of these council members together, discuss, vote on the business before Cholo. Thank you for our staff that works hard and brings us to a good education level on the issues. Thank you for the very blessing of living on this mountain. I'd ask that you'd be with those of our country that are home and abroad in the armed services, guide and direct, give us wisdom, forgive us where we fail you. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly and Councilwoman Kukavas. At this time, let's just pause for about thirty seconds if we could to give a little tribute and honor to a great President of the United States, George H.W. Butch. Thank you. I think one of the great stories that I heard was both he and Barbara came from very wealthy families and they could have just set aside and lived off the family, but they decided to go and be their own people and do their own thing. And so he moved to Texas and there he got into the oil business and there he made his own fame and fortune himself and rose from that to become President of the United States and had a great family and went through many of the trials that many families go through, losing a young daughter at age three to leukemia and the challenges that they've gone through. But he still was a gentleman. He was a scholar. He was the President of this great country. And may we always be grateful for the men who hold the position and give them respect for what they do. And I'm just grateful to be an American and for the privilege that we have in our democracy to stand up and be heard and to be able to come together as a council and make decisions for our citizens here. I'm grateful for our citizens and for you uniting and being great people and great citizens. And may we remember the freedoms that we enjoy and the liberties, may we protect those always. Thank you. Tonight, we have a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not scheduled on the agenda may do so at this time. Please address the council as a whole and keep your time to three minutes.
Thank you for letting me come here tonight. Bill Cop wanted me to come and give an update of our event that we have partnered up with your city to do across the street. Thank you.
Please state your name if you would, please.
Perry Leach.
Thank you.
And my son Aaron Leach, we're the one doing the events. It's the Heroes Tribute Light Show slash Magic on the Mountain is what we've named it. And Ed asked me to explain a little bit about what it is. We have a box. We're one of the, probably the only one in the country has a box that takes sound or audio and divides it into music into different light tones. It corresponds to tones. It's not a computer program. You can put anything into it and it'll go. I designed that years ago and got a patent on it. They, some of the council members here have seen it last year when we were in the Country Club. And we decided to work with you since we live across the street now and it's turned out very well. Our opening night, we had about three hundred and fifty people show up. And we have built a larger screen since then. And we have about fifteen sponsors. And Darrell Seymour was our first. And I wanted to thank, you know, our sponsors and Kalelectric and Nav Apache Construction stood way beyond the call to bring us a generator. That was a hurdle that we had of being able to supply enough power. And especially if we needed any vendors. We only had one vendor so far. All the rest are too booked up to bother with us right now. But anyway, things turned out very well. You know, there's been some nights it's been slow, other nights not so slow. It's brought a lot of people joy. Some person kept telling me they keep coming back because it's a place of joy. That's a good thing to hear. It is kind of magical out there. I suggested that maybe Bill, we could have a city employees night, employees come over and you guys serve them hot chocolate and coffee and whatever else. And to play the tunes that your city members would want. Aaron can bring up, excuse me, anything you so desire. You know, we have several thousand songs and we have videos that are a tribute to the military, police, fire and first responders. And we mix it up with a little bit of Christmas things for the children as well. Turned out very well. I'm very pleased. We have a new color brochure coming out. It's been put out by White Mountain Tees. They said they have two hundred copies and we'll bring some down to City Hall and we'll start distributing them throughout all the businesses in town so we can get more people aware of what's going on. That's basically in a nutshell. So each song plays a different display on the trees. You probably have about twenty trees out there. The big one there, we put a lot of white lights on. I figured somebody could get a summer when that thing lights up. But it's been very spectacular. I would encourage you to come down, even on a cold night. We have a broadcaster. Bill got us one ordered and we got it in. And you can keep your windows rolled up. It's like a night at the drive-in theaters. Is there any questions? I know Kale, he always asking questions to people at the pulpit. Do you have any questions? Nope. Okay.
Your son's got a question.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm Aaron Leach. Once again, I appreciate you guys letting us use city property for this magical Magic on the Mountain for our first responders, our heroes. I just want to say that we start off every night with the National Anthem and then God Bless USA and then the playlist won't ever be the same. So I hope you guys get a chance to come out and see it. It's pretty magical. Magic on the Mountain is what it is. I thank again for everything.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else on Call of the Public? See no others. I'll close call to the public at this time. Bring it back. We have a special recognition tonight. If we could have the Leach family come forward here, both of you guys here. This is, the Cholo City Council recognizes the Leach family for their contributions and outstanding service to the citizens of Cholo for the beautiful and festivity Christmas light display along Knight Street from Hall Street to the entrance. I'd like to present this with you guys tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Looks awesome.
Right now?
It's about thirty minutes.
Looks beautiful.
If we leave, we ain't coming back. If we leave, we aren't coming back.
Thank you, guys.
Get me outside. I don't know where my truck is.
Thank you very much. We recently had a election here past November. And so I guess it didn't go that far to November. It actually was settled in August, I believe. So we have the swearing in of new council members. Ms. Turn the tide to Ms. Kurosaki.
Thank you, Mayor. I will ask the three new council members to join me down here.
Once a year, I wear a tie. This is one of them.
Please raise your right hand. I say your name.
I, John Leach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the position of city councilman.
Discharge the duties of the position of the city councilman.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
To help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Ann, and congratulations, council members. Appreciate it. Next item is Item B, the designation of Vice Mayor to a two-year term. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Rett Hatch for the time that he served the past two years as Vice Mayor. I appreciate his willingness to serve and dedication that he gave to that position. We started something a little different last year. And rather than maybe council members against one another or anything, I think we have six council members that would, every one of them would be a great Vice Mayor. And so those of you who would like to throw your hat, willingness to serve as Vice Mayor, go ahead and raise your hand. And then we're going to have our ritual of our draw the deuce for the Vice Mayor.
That's different.
For those that like to, go ahead and raise your hand. It'd like to be part.
There's a hand.
Four, okay. We have four here. Rennie, Councilmember Critton, Councilmember Alsop, Councilmember Leach, and Vice Mayor, current Vice Mayor, Rett Hatch. Any others? All right. Let's go down here and I will. She has willingness that she'd like to revolve.
You don't want to play cards? You're a contributing member and a well-positioned contributing member. Can nominate you? Then nominate.
Mayor.
I would like to make it clear that I would be willing to serve. However, I have been there and done that and some of the others have not. And I don't think there's anybody here, like you've already stated, that would fail the office. And for that reason, I will not participate.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay.
Probably get to play cards.
Yeah.
Now, you guys can decide who wants to go first. I'm not going to choose that.
The Vice Mayor. Let's do it by age, Vice Mayor. Who's the youngest? You. Uh, you guys are. Twenty-seven.
I'm only nineteen because I'm a leap year baby. I was born every four years.
Vice Mayor, you'll cut the deck. Draw from the top, one card the best you can. Turn it over. Tell who gets the deuce.
Is the deuce in there?
Whatever order you're drawing.
Yeah, let's just go around. What the heck.
Deuce. Right off the get-go, that'd be fun. Wouldn't that be?
Oh, the first deuce turned over. But it's a heart. Yeah. Diamond.
Morgan, did you make sure it was in here?
I did. Ace. Love.
It's not your turn. We're cheating. Just because it's a card game.
I can't watch that, Rennie.
You know, it's funny. I've played cards with Rennie before and he does cheat.
Oh, when did we play?
Two deuces left in the deck.
Where are you going?
Still nothing?
Four diamonds, six of hearts, five of hearts, seven of spades.
There is. Michael.
Congratulations.
I told you you would win if we played cards.
Okay. A new Vice Mayor.
You don't have to move that.
Wish me luck the next meeting, please.
I'm sitting in your chair. Can I have it one day? At least age before beauty any day.
Seeing that we drew cards and the deuce of club was in the deck, Councilmember Alsop is the new Vice Mayor.
Congratulations.
Yeah. We have the presentation of an annual report by the Cholo Historical Society. Next item, Claire Thomas. Oh, just a minute, Claire. I forgot to do something, okay? I'm sorry. Thanksgiving, we gave a few turkeys away. Nobody called. We tried to give some turkeys away, okay? So tonight, we're going to give hams away, okay? Not any of you that are in the audience, you automatically do not qualify for being here. But anyone else, you need to text your phone number to this number, nine-two-eight-two-zero-seven-five-eight-five-zero. That number is nine-two-eight-two-zero-seven-five-eight-five-zero. So the line is open. Go ahead and text and you will get a ham for Christmas. Claire Thomas, thank you.
Our screens don't come on. Well, good evening, Mayor Seymour and council members. Congratulations to all of you on fulfilling your terms. The Cholo Historical Society, we also had our election year this year for the two-year term. And our new elected officers are Bob Shamasko, President, Danny Seymour, Vice President, Lindsay Atrin, Secretary, Sandy Braswell, Membership, John Rolison, Treasurer, Susis in Public Relations, and Diane Layton, Historian. So I just wanted to make you all informed of that. And as usual, I give you all some of our numbers that we accomplished throughout the year. And the 2018 season proved to be another good year at the museum. Our visitor count was four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six visitors, and that's up five hundred visitors from 2017. And our volunteer hours is one thousand six hundred and six. And I have to give a shout out to all of our volunteers at the museum because without those volunteers, I am sure that we would not do the business that we do at that museum. They contribute a lot of their time and energy, and I'm very grateful for them. And our items that we received and were accessioned were a hundred and seventy, and that includes items on loan and that were donated to the museum. And at this point, I wanted to share that with the passing of several of our pioneer members within the community, their families were so generous in donating a lot of their historical documents, personal items that they had collected over the years. They thought of the museum and now we are housing those. One in particular is Ms. Elizabeth Nicholas's scrapbooks. I think Elizabeth began scrapbooking before it came popular. And so we have most all of her documents in our little library. And there's two particular notebooks that Elizabeth kept and it with its newspaper clippings on all of the members within these communities that served in World War II. And it's just fabulous documentation. I, you know, you hear these stories growing up, but to see it in black and white and just the personal memories of each service member that served and so many that did not come home. So I'd invite you all to come into the library and take a look at those. Those are priceless, priceless documents. Again, to Pal and Peggy Butler had a wonderful collection of items and we've received some of their personal items as well. Those have all been accessioned and they're out now for display for everyone to enjoy. And also, our dear friend, Jo Baeza, she was a local author, journalist. And we have a lot of Jo's documented stories and books as well in our library. So our little library proves to be a great asset to the museum as well as the city of Cholo. So in saying that, as in years past, we at the museum strive to provide a safe and educational setting for children of all ages to learn about history, to come and just enjoy being amongst other children. And our railroad club contributes a great deal to that. The museum has partnered with the Arizona Courts Appointed Advocates Program. And that's a service through Navajo County. And in doing so, we have the advocates that bring in their children and they can spend the morning or afternoons with us. We have children's activities which teach the children about history, but it also just allows them to be children. So they enjoy being there and they also get the education that is required for the advocates to report back to their peers. And so continuing with education, we are gracious enough to be asked by the city of Cholo to participate in Kids Rock Program, still providing Heritage Days at the museum to the Nicholas Homestead and Blue Ridge Schools. We also hosted St. Anthony Schools, Mountain Christian Schools, Hopi Day School. And the Hopi children, they rode on their bus for over two hours just to come to our museum. I was so impressed by that. So it's not just our local communities here. We're reaching out further and further as each year passes. We teamed with Cholo High this year, Mr. Adams freshman class. We had an all-day event where his students came in during their classroom time. They came to the museum, spent their time at the museum, and they were given specific items that they needed to look for in the museum and then go back to their class. And they would acquire a history grade for this event. And something I'm particularly proud of is we have young journalists from the Grand Canyon University and the Northern Arizona Universities. And they, both of these universities are partnering with the museum so that their journalists can either come into our museum and use our facility in the library and/or do phone interviews to help these young journalists acquire their degrees. And one in particular, she is writing a piece through, where's she from here, through Northern Arizona University, and it will appear in the Arizona Highways, I believe in February. So we're really happy to contribute in that. The museum continues to host during the summer. We are so busy. Sometimes I don't know if I'm coming or going, but that's good. This year, we had the Studebaker Car Club, the Mercedes-Benz Car Club, numerous church groups, book signings, the Boys Scouts, Girl Scouts. And we continue to partner with a lot of organizations within the communities, the Nature Center, Forest Service, Arizona Game and Fish, Timber Mesa Fire, libraries and museums. And we want to thank the City TV, the Independent Newspaper, the Maverick Magazine, tech companies Yelp, Time Travelers and AAA. These are just a few that we partner with in our advertising and are grateful for their advertising. It not only spreads the word about what a terrific museum we have here in Cholo, but it also spreads the word about what a terrific community Cholo is itself. And then our in-house partners, the Silver Creek Railroaders Club, once again was awarded a grant in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Arizona Historical Society. And this money is used to further build and improve the railroad exhibit, which most of you have seen if you've been into the museum. Noah Harp, who is our youngest railroad enthusiast, I think Noah's thirteen, and he absolutely loves the railroad. He provided the amazing photos that we have for our last three additional window screens. And I'm not sure if you all have seen them, but we encourage you to take a look at them. They're on the east side of the building. And they are photographs of the original trains that ran from McNary to Maverick and vice versa. And there's one in particular. It's Locomotive 100, I believe it is. And it is in the wintertime and the snow is above that train. And so it depicts how it really was here. So the museum was honored to be a part of the Old Stone Jail relocation project in providing the historical information and also in the upcoming Champion Airplane model, which will be, there will be a ceremony at the airport, I believe, on Friday. We provided quite a bit of information for that as well. And just a few notes of humor, and then I won't take any more of your time. We get some of the strangest calls at the museum. And we don't know why we get these calls because our phone number's a little hard to find in the phone book. But we get calls like, how old are the apple trees? And why do they grow so many apples? And what's the weather doing up there? Where's the fire when people see smoke or smell smoke? And people bring in things for appraisals, maps, jewelry books, metal items. And often, often, we're asked what the population of Cholo is. And these calls are answered to the best of our knowledge because we are a historical museum after all. But we are not arborists or forecasters, a fire department, appraisers or census takers. But nonetheless, we all try to participate to answer the questions of anyone that shows an interest in Cholo. So you see, the Cholo Museum wears many hats. And at this time, I just want to thank the city of Cholo, Navajo County, Arizona State, ADEQ, and APS for improvements on our aging building. And through your continued support, we strive to be the best we can be in providing a service for the betterment of Cholo. And I would like to just say, request a final thing this evening. This past year, like I mentioned, with the passing of several of our longtime members here in Cholo, that just opens up the door that we are all next in line. And it would be great if you could all begin to record your family's histories and to the best that you can. Like Ms. Elizabeth, if we didn't have Elizabeth's notes to fall back on, we wouldn't know any of that about our military that were in service here. And believe me, there were a lot of men that left this mountain to go serve in our military and we're honored for that. So please just try to jot down, even if it's on the calendar, like Eb Lewis would do, you know? And it works. So. So in closing, I want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and thank you again for your support. Do you have any questions I can answer for you?
Are you running out of room yet?
Yes, we are. Yes. I don't want to think of moving. I don't know what we would do, but I'm sure we've managed.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item we have is item D, the presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
There it is.
Ending June 30th. Justin Johnson and grateful to have Mike Spilker here of the Audit Company.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. We do have Mike Spilker here from Hinton Burdick CPAs. And I would like to take a minute to thank Mike and the Hinton Burdick team. We did, we were able to work with them and coordinate schedules to get the audit presented a month earlier. This year we wanted to get it done before the end of the year. Typically, we do this presentation in January. So we appreciate Mike and his team in accommodating that request. The other thing I would like to mention is there's been some discussion about maybe switching up the audit teams over time just to get a different set of eyes. And I think Hinton Burdick does a good job of, their staff is large enough that they can rotate in different audit leads, different staff members, different auditors, so we don't get the same people every time looking at the same stuff. We get a lot of different eyes on our, our financials and we appreciate the good job they're doing. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Mike to walk through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Honorable Mayor and City Council, City Staff, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. Unfortunately, I'm not sure I have anything as exciting or interesting as a drawing of the Dusick Club's present tonight, but we'll do our best. I think however, there are maybe three or four things tonight that are, are pretty significant and will be of interest to the council and the citizens. Maybe before I dive into the presentation, I'll just touch on some of the, maybe the three things I think might be the most significant. One of those we'll talk about is the fact that the city has paid off three of their debt instruments last fiscal year. We're talking about the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018 tonight. So we'll see a decrease in debt service requirements coming forward, so that's a great thing. You'll notice that there, and we'll talk about this also, that the enterprise funds have experienced increases in their net operating margins this last fiscal year, and that should continue going forward as well. And then lastly, this may not be as significant for, for you in looking at the financial statements, but the city had to implement GASB statement number 75 this last fiscal year. That's accounting and financial reporting for other post-employment benefits. You'll see on page 64 of the CAFR, there's a footnote on that restatement adjustment. It was only a $20,000 adjustment to net position for the city, but very significant implementation. There are a lot of additional footnotes and disclosures that come with that. When I started out in, in public accounting over 30 years ago, the GASB issued their first concept statement. And I think they set a goal to have 100 GASBs before I retired. So we're, we're getting close to that. In a couple of years, we'll have a couple of more significant ones. GASB 87, accounting for leases will probably impact the city and probably a couple of others that may not be as significant. So we have those to look forward to. So with that, I'll talk about the financial statements. The bound document contains our audit opinion letters as well as the financial statements and a lot of statistical tables and lots of information and disclosures. We've audited those financial statements and issued our report on page one and three. And we've issued what we call an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. Also in connection with performing an audit for a local government, we do, we take a look at the city's internal controls over financial reporting as well as the city's compliance with laws and regulations. And we've issued that report on page 127 and 128. And this year we have no material weaknesses noted and one significant deficiency, which relates to, I believe you've probably all received that, that Findings and Recommendations Report. It relates to accounting and financial reporting. Generally accepted auditing standards requires us to issue a finding if we have discovered audit adjustments that are significant during our audit process. And I just wanted to mention that the city had their accounting manager retire this last fiscal year. And you also changed accounting systems. And I, I believe that, you know, the combination of those things was the result of the, most of the adjustments that we found this year. And like Justin said, I think it's the fact that we're issuing and covering the report tonight in December is indicative that things are well in order and, and we can expect good things in the future. We audit probably well over 70 local governments and there are not that many that, that I've actually reported on yet. So this is a positive thing to note for tonight. We also issue a report on state compliance and that's on one, page 129, and there are no findings related to that. Well, that covers the reports that we've issued. So now we'll talk a little bit about the, the, the city's overall financial position, which is presented on page 17. The city's net position or equity is 115 million at the end of the year. And if we look at that net position, increases or decreases in that over time can be an indication of the city's financial health. We have to look at other factors such as the condition of roads and streets and wellroads and buildings and infrastructure and what have you. But a positive increase of three points, about 3.6 million occurred during fiscal year 2018. So, so that's a, a great report for the fiscal year. There was about 3.3 of that was from governmental activities and about 296,000 was from your, all of your business type activities, the water, wastewater and refuse activities. So this is, I believe, page 17 and, and 18 in the CAFR that we're going to look at here real quick. This is an overall picture of what happened during the fiscal year. The first column there lists the expenses by function or program. So we can see that public safety was 5.9 million. The cost of Public Works was 7.8 million and so forth. Water costs were 3.5. And then we list the direct program revenues that relate to those categories and come up with a shortfall. So after all the charges in service for services and those directly related grants, you see the shortfalls there for each program and function. So like general government, they're the first line item. We have a $2.4 million shortfall and so forth.
Does that mean that they were under budget or they spent 2.4 million more?
They spent 2.4 million more than they had direct charges for that program. And then if we look at the next page, so if you go, see, does this go back previous? So we come down for total government, we see the shortfall of 13.6 million after direct program revenues. Then the next page, we start with that 13.6 million and we see how the tax revenues and what we call general revenues supported that shortfall. So city sales tax and all of these other state taxes and so forth were 16.9 million. So overall, we had a net increase in the governmental activities of that 3.3 million. And then the business activities were about 300,000. So that gives you a good overview of each program for the fiscal year. And to continue on talking about some of the government-wide financial highlights, the governmental capital assets decreased by 800,000. The actual additions were 3 million, but depreciation was 3.9 million. And some of your significant governmental capital asset additions were some road and infrastructure improvements there. The, the transportation bus, 129,000 and then land purchase of 280,000. And your business capital assets also decreased overall by 493,000. Additions were 2.1 million and depreciation was 2.6. We had some sewer extensions and upgrades, some waterline extensions and upgrades. And 281,000 spent on a hydrovac unit were some of the significant. There were other additions obviously, but these are kind of more of the significant ones that we've listed there. Okay, continuing this again is kind of one of the, the highlights of the presentation this year or the fiscal year 2018 is the governmental long-term liabilities decreased by 2 million. There, the total is 27 million at June 30, 2018. So your regularly scheduled debt service payments for the year were 1.8 million. And for next year, fiscal year 19, for governmental activities, that's dropped down to 591,000. And as I kind of mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, you paid off the Improvement District number six and number seven. And the God Upon Series 2006B were also paid off, so. Business type activities debt also decreased to 8.4 million by 260,000. And you can see the scheduled debt service payments there for business type activities. Okay, now we'll kind of switch gears a little bit and start talking about fund financial statements. We'll start off with the governmental funds. And the fund financial statements start on page 20 of your financial statement. And they're presented a little bit differently. They're more of a, a cash basis than they are a full accrual basis. They don't, for the governmental activities, it doesn't consider your capital assets and long-term debt. So just kind of keep that in mind as we talk about fund balance. So for the general fund, it, the fund balance increased to 10.5 million from 8.2. And 10.5 million might sound like a significant fund balance. But when we compare that to total general fund expenditures, that represents about 79% of last fiscal year's total expenses. So not quite one year's worth of expenditures are on hand, so to speak. The general fund reported revenues in excess of expenditures of 2.2 million. And when we look at the general fund budget, very significant or positive picture there. The general fund received about 3 million more than they, than you anticipated receiving. And that was mainly because of city's sales tax revenues. And your actual expenditures were held to less than you budgeted by 2.5 million. So very positive budget and actual report for the fiscal year for the general fund. No changes in the HERF fund, fund balance of 1.4 million. That's kind of designed that way if the, the city generally expends all the HERF revenues for street-related projects. And if there's necessary funds in excess of that, the, the general fund transfers in to make that break even, so. Now we'll talk just briefly again about the enterprise funds. All of the enterprise funds, except for the wastewater fund, reported operating income fiscal year 2018. And these reports for the enterprise funds are on pages 26 through 28. The last one, page 28, is the cash flow statement for the enterprise funds. And that reports operating activities were positive for all of the enterprise fund. So not including depreciation expense and whatever, we have positive cash flows for all the enterprise funds. And again, like we mentioned earlier, there was a net overall increase in all of the city enterprise funds of about 290,000. And that's about a $500,000 swing increase from fiscal year 17. A very positive swing in that regard. And we'll talk specifically about that here in just a minute. I think maybe I'll, I'll skip through some of these flat slides. If you have questions, feel free to stop me, but in the interest of time, we'll kind of just touch on these really quickly. General fund shows a, a really strong financial position. General fund cash has also increased from 2014 to 2018 over the last five years. A good financial position there. You see the restricted cash there, the pink line of 1.3 million. Most of that is just deposits that are held by the city. And I believe there was one significant deposit, I can't remember what that, that was, but it was close to a million or a couple of them that were for, maybe for bonds or something. So we look at the general fund revenue expenses. A lot of local governments that we look at with the general fund, the revenues and expenses kind of swing back and forth from year to year as revenues come in and as projects are funded for and then expended, so to speak. It just so happens that the, the city of Cholo's general fund has reported excess revenues for the last five fiscal years. And this, this is reported before transfers out. Like we mentioned, sometimes the general fund will transfer out funds to the, the street fund and so forth. And maybe to the capital projects fund or special projects for grant matching purposes and so forth. So now we look at the general fund, just to kind of compare the, the overall programs. In summary, we see a decrease in general government, 209,000 and so forth. We have an overall increase from fiscal 17 to 18 of about $1 million, at 1.4 million. And of that, a million was related to capital outlay during the year, which we had in 18, but none in fiscal year 2017 out of the general fund. And that was for the, those items that we previously discussed, some of those purchases. Now we get, maybe this might be a little more interesting, the sales tax revenue. This is the largest single-source revenue of the city. And we can see that sales tax revenues have increased by about 23% over the last five fiscal years, up from 9.9 million to 12.2 million. And so from 17 to 18, that represents about an 11% increase. This chart here shows some of the other significant tax revenues of the city. Franchise taxes and state taxes have all increased slightly over the last five years. And your urban revenue sharing has basically kind of remained flat. It's gone from 1.2 million to 1, well, 1.19 to 1.25. So because of the city's sales tax revenue, your overall tax revenue has increased by 20% over the last five years, 9% this last fiscal year, up, up to 15.6 million. This chart pretty much just shows the same thing condensed for the last three charts there. Want to look at that when you have a minute. This chart pretty much just shows the same thing condensed for the last three charts there. You want to look at that when you have a minute. So that brings us to uh the we'll go over some of the major funds that are reported for the city. Uh won't hit every fund. Uh the first one is the highway user fund. Shows revenues and expenses there over the last five years. And uh before transfers in, the HERF fund is expending, as we would expect, all of the HERF fund revenues that come in that are restricted for road uh construction and improvements and maintenance and so forth. So basically, because of the transfers in and and balancing that fund, it's maintained that pretty much that cash balance, one point one up to eight seven million up to two thousand eighteen there. A pretty steady balance. Okay, that brings us to the last uh two or three funds here, the enterprise funds. Now, uh we talked a little bit about the water fund briefly. As you can see here, the water fund is an enterprise fund, so we want to see operating revenues in excess of operating expenses, and that's what the city's reported over the last five years. And also, we see the we see a little bit of a widening in that gap, which is a good thing for fiscal year eighteen. And so because of that, the city's been able to set aside cash in the water fund for future capital improvement, so that there there won't be as large of a need or more as a significant of need to bond for future projects. So we've gone from three point two million to five point five million in the in the water fund. Waste water fund is a little bit different scenario. It's reported net operating losses for most of the last five fiscal years, including fiscal year eighteen. If we look at the the cash flows of the water of the wastewater fund, you'll see that uh there are positive but excuse me, negative cash flows, but uh most of that is related to uh capital additions that occurred during the year. There was in the wastewater fund, there was one point one million that was expended, so. And the drop in this cash here from twenty fifteen to sixteen, uh there was a major capital improvement of nearly five million dollars that uh occurred in fiscal year sixteen that brought that cash balance down. So you can see the need for the setting aside of those uh net revenues that are received each year. And I understand in the wastewater fund, there'll be rate uh a rate increase implemented in January. So maybe that net expense will that trend will reverse going forward. The last one here is the internal service fund, uh a positive uh report over the last four fiscal years there. And so we see an increase in the the health insurance fund cash reserves that are held for payment of premiums and claims that are submitted by the employees and so forth in the city. So good report there for that last one. This just shows uh a chart for each of the major funds that we've talked about tonight and a couple others here. Um we can see that most of the city's governmental funds experienced increases uh or remained about the same. The general fund had the significant increase because of sales taxes. Internal service fund is going up, as we'd like to see, setting aside those reserves. And uh again, recap here of your water and wastewater. Water increased, wastewater decreased slightly, uh but we hope to see a reversal of that in the next fiscal year. A reversal of that trend. And then our last chart here. No applause, please, since it's the last chart. Um you can see that, as outlined there, the difference between twenty seventeen and eighteen and the numbers that that correspond with those charts. So general fund went from eight point two to ten point five and so forth. So great report for tonight. I really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and uh present this tonight. It's kind of quick, and there's a lot of information and and uh obviously even a lot more information in your CAFR. Feel free to uh give me a call or shoot me an email if you have questions as you look through that. So I'll open it up. I think that's all I have if there are any questions.
Appreciate it. Is there any uh comments or questions? And we just appreciate the opportunity to have you and the report that we're able to do this favorable. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is the consent calendar. I looked at council if there's any items that need to be polled or talked about individually. Not all go over those items. We have a consideration approval of a proposal for the fiscal year twenty twenty budget calendar. I'll look over that calendar and please put those dates on your your calendars there. We have the consideration of reappointment of board member to the Sholo Municipal Property Corporation. Consideration of approval of commercial operating agreement with Native Air Service to operate at Sholo Regional Airport and approve the amended sublease agreement between Native Air and Guardian Air. And then we have the minutes of the study session of November twentieth and the regular meeting of November twentieth. And then I look for a motion. Have a motion by Vice Mayor Alsop, I guess I have to, in second, by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? All for the vote, all those in favor? Any oppose? Did that pass? Do you in favor of that, John?
Yeah, I was what dates were you talking about that were?
On the calendar of the the budget calendar items there, there's a lot of dates in there. Do that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing for ordinance number two zero eighteen dash oh seven, amending the zoning ordinance of the city. Amending the zoning map and amending the zoning of property known as AP number twenty. Sorry, number two ten fourteen dash zero zero one H from C two general commercial to L one light industrial, Mr. Tragaskus.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this regular meeting of November twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero. Commissioners Barons and Adams absent to recommend approval of the zone change request submitted by Joe Griswold to rezone property located at seven eighty North Sixteenth Street, more particularly described as AP number two ten fourteen zero zero one H from general commercial or C two to light industrial or I one. The applicant indicated that he wants to build and sell portable buildings, uh commonly referred to as sheds, on the subject property. Constructing portable buildings is not allowed in the C two zone, however, constructing sheds is considered a permitted use in the I one zone. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on November first of two thousand eighteen. A few neighbors who attended expressed concerns about the possibility of increased noise as they live live near the subject property. The applicant stated that he plans to keep the noise to a minimum. Staff has scheduled the public hearing and possible adoption of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash zero seven for December fourth, two thousand eighteen. The ordinance would become effective thirty days thereafter. Commission decision, uh three conditions of approval. One, all development shall comply with all federal, state, and local requirements. Two, the subject property shall comply with section fifteen one forty-four S one entitled Noise of the City Code. And three, the applicant shall comply with the requirements as outlined in City Code, section fifteen one sixty-one, I one zone light industrial, including section fifteen one sixty-one D ten screening from adjacent properties. This screening shall take place at the time of the development of the adjacent properties. Now with that, staff as well as the applicant are available for question.
Any, yeah, Councilmember Leach.
What's there now?
Uh on the overhead, and actually, this is probably our first official use of the new aerial photo that that we recently received. You can see the subject property is outlined in kind of a turquoise color. Uh there's kind of a gravel parking area in the middle. Uh at the time that the picture was taken, this property was being used as a storage yard for one of the vehicle repair businesses that we have here in town. Those vehicles have since been removed, so even though this picture is only a couple months old, it's already out of date. Um so we may be coming back to you at budget time, but uh at this time, the the property is vacant.
And I guess what I was getting at is I don't know how much, there's no houses around there. I don't understand the concern. I know there's a motel right there, but there's more noise to the west of that property from the motel than I was just curious of who was.
So directly to the south of the subject property is the Horn Auto Repair Center. Uh directly to the north are industrial businesses. To the west is vacant. To the east, uh that property is zone C two, but it is being used to store vehicles. There also is a home that is uh located there on the property, directly behind the hotel and Persnickety's, uh kind of up on the bluff. That home is from the edge of the home to the uh subject property is approximately a hundred and fifty feet in distance. Uh the applicant has indicated at the planning and zoning meeting uh that they intend to do the construction on the west side of the subject property, uh therefore being as far away from that residence as possible.
Is the access on East Adams?
Uh the access for this property is only off of East Adams, uh right there where you make the bend headed on to the north at Sixteenth. There is uh kind of this little uh tail coming off the end. We were asked at the Planning and Zoning Commission if that was an access there. At one time, it probably looked good on paper, uh that that could be an access, maybe extending Sixteenth to the south and uh intersecting in with uh the Deucea Clubs. However, there's a very substantial grade there, uh and so the the actuality of putting in a road is is pretty slim.
Can you explain what screening is? Uh screening shall take place at the time of the development on the condition number three?
Yes, um as outlined in City Code fifteen one sixty-one. Uh and I can read that um to you. It states, and this is from the code, where a lot adjoins a dissimilar zone, industrial and or commercial uses shall be screened by solid material fence. Six feet in height is defined in section fifteen one forty-four. If you go to our actual definitions section of the code, you will not find a definition for a solid material fence. Uh you do have to refer to section fifteen one forty-four uh in which it says under storage facilities, where storage facilities are to be enclosed by uh a masonry wall or solid fence as required elsewhere in this ordinance. Uh such enclosure shall be considered adequate when constructed of masonry without aperture, excluding required gates, wood fence with no aperture, excluding one quarter inch, exceeding one quarter inch, or other material approved by the Planning and Zoning Director. Essentially, it's got to be a wood fence, a block fence, a concrete fence, that type of thing. Uh chain link with slats does not meet the definition uh of a solid material fence.
Councilmember Leach.
So are you're not talking around the whole property, right? You're just talking about this one side? They're gonna have to put a wall?
So um at the time that the adjacent properties develop, uh for example, uh over here to the west, if that property were to develop uh as written by or as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the owner of the subject property at the time would be required to put that solid material wall along that west side. Um there is a very significant geological feature. Uh we like to call it the bluff around here. Um that's about twenty-five feet from the top of the bluff to the bottom of the bluff, uh with the bottom part of the bluff of the property there really not being usable. So essentially, it would be from the edge of the bluff to the north. Uh and then the same thing over here on the east side, if that property were to ever develop as a um under the C two zoning guidelines, uh removing the vehicles that are there and and actually developing it with the a C two type business. Then at that time, they would be required to put the wall along the east side. Uh along the south side, uh because of the uh difference in grade, it really does not make any sense at all to put the wall down there on the bottom of the bluff when you got a twenty-five-foot rock wall right behind it. And then to the north, they abut industrial, so there would be no uh no reason to put a wall along the north side.
One of my questions I have with pertaining to the wall, I know it doesn't have to go in right now, but is there any restriction other than that's a a deed restriction, or let's say that this person were to sell this property, and the new owner says, I don't know anything about that, and I don't want to put the fence in. He has a different city council. At that time, that's where we've had a little problems in the past. Uh is there a way to record something that this is a requirement to be developed, and if that property were to change, then the owner then is new owner is subject to that condition as well? Or and then the owner, he's here tonight, or the applicant's here tonight? And I guess uh is he willing to put, if it necessary, a block fence along those boundaries as they're developed?
Um to answer the first question, it is possible to put that requirement on, that uh any zoning uh stipulations placed by the council on this property uh be recorded with the property. Uh as far as uh walls and and timings, uh I believe that question probably more for the applicant.
I'd like to see that recorded, because I've seen where it's come back and and not been enforced or been able to, if property has changed before and what was approved by the council and what was approved, uh it wasn't adhered to by uh the new property owners, because they didn't know anything about it. So that's what I would, you know, think it's good if we're making a zone change. Do you have any uh any restrictions of having a deed restriction on that?
No, I don't, but I do believe.
Can you come up? Are you able to come up?
Yes. Good case of the gout.
Thank you.
Never had it before in my life. So anyway, um what was the question again?
Do you have any problem with the deed restriction?
No, I'm fine with deed restriction on that. I do believe that the property to the west is, I mean, to the east is going, uh this property over here is going to be a probably become industrial itself in the near future.
Okay.
Right. I'm not positive, but it it it's in a change of ownership situation itself in the near future, and I believe it will be. I uh applied for industrial also, and at that point, the block wall would be, there would be similar properties.
Okay.
But I have no problem. It is council, the Adams property, which is all this over here where the house is and all the cars and stuff. It has along the red line across the top, slats in the fence. The green line is a chain link fence, uh an eight-foot chain link fence. All of it's eight, basically, it got an eight-foot chain link fence around it. I wouldn't have any problem putting slots, the same slats in it. But if whatever it takes is what it takes, it's just the expense of building a fence now.
Sure, we're not asking, but I don't think a chain link is going to comply necessarily with the code.
It won't comply.
Right, right, one there. Okay. Yeah, as long as you're willing to comply and, you know, that way I don't have a problem then.
Yeah, when it when the time comes, I'm good with that, and future buyers will have no choice.
Thank you. We need to, when we do this, do we need to make a motion to have that recorded onto the plat, if possible?
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. This time, uh any other council questions at all? I'll open this up for public hearing. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this matter may do so at this time. Seeing nobody moved, I'll close, call the public and bring it back by by unanimous consent. I'll ask the the clerk to read ordinance number two zero eighteen dash oh seven by title only, since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Sholo, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance of the city, amending the zoning map, changing the zoning on property located in section twenty township ten north, range twenty-two east of the Gila and Salt River Meridian, Navajo County, Arizona, more particularly described as AP number two ten fourteen one H from C two general commercial to I one light industrial.
Thank you. This time I look for a motion. Councilmember Crichton.
I move to adopt ordinance number two oh one eight dash oh seven.
There a stipulation in your motion or not?
Uh yes, the stipulation is that it is recorded uh so that future purchasers will have to follow the uh thing that we approved tonight.
The conditions?
Conditions, yes.
Thank you. You have a motion? Thank you. You have a motion, is there a second? By Vice Mayor, any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item is item 8C, consideration of acceptance of 8th Street and McNeil Street improvements, City of Cholo Project R-1218, Mr. Hemasaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city received a community development block grant, or CDBG, grant for approximately $242,000, for which it has been utilized to construct roadway and pedestrian improvements along North 8th Street and East McNeil in the downtown area. Scope of work was advertised to include installing concrete curb and gutter, sidewalk, ADA ramps, driveways, and drainage infrastructure. And the improvements were bid as a base bid and an additive alter number one. The base bid and add alt number one were rewarded to Western Grade LLC in the amount not to exceed $285,468.12 at the September 18th, 2018 council meeting. Construction for this project is being completed, anticipated this week, for a final project cost of $284,824.12. Contractor has asked the city to approve the construction of this project at this December 4th council meeting, so the project can be closed out more quickly, rather than waiting another month for the next city council meeting. This will allow the city to finalize the project with CDBG in this calendar year, and release the contractor's bond requirements more quickly. City staff will not release the final payment to the project till a final walkthrough is completed, and the certificate of final completion is issued. Staff recommends accepting the 8th Street and McNeil Street improvements, City of Cholo Project R-1218, release the retainage, and initiate the two-year warranty period once the certificate of final completion is issued. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I got a question. They did a great job, you know, Western Grading did a great job down that road and everything else. I just know I'm already getting questions about, how long is it going to take to get the road resurfaced so it's nice and smooth again? I said, hopefully by the, by the end of this next year. So, but, you know, I, I, just to let people know that, you know, this is not, even though we're going to do a final thing on this, we still come back and we're going to repave that road and make it look nice.
Yeah, as you remember, when we awarded this, we actually removed all the asphalt work on this project, so we can get more concrete work done. For the CDBG projects, it's kind of our preference downtown. So city staff is very capable of doing the asphalt work and getting there and do that work. We are up against the clock and the calendar a little bit, we understand that. We will be in there this week and in the next couple of weeks to get the asphalt work back done. And there is significant improvements, especially on the McNeil portion. Some very large asphalt going back in there, large patchwork and some roadway fixes. So, on the next few weeks, you'll see a lot done, and we're going to fight the weather until, as long as we can.
Thank you.
You bet.
This is a great safety feature that's long overdue in the community. Along there, we have a lot of children that walk along those streets, and having sidewalks along there is really going to be helpful. It's great. Leach?
Ready for a motion. I move to accept the 8th Street and McNeil Street improvements, City of Cholo Project Number R-1218, release the retainage and initiate the two-year warranty period once the certificate of final completion is issued.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item is item 8D, consideration of ordinance number 2018-08, amending Section 17-3-3 Rules and Regulations of Chapter 17, Parks and Recreation of the Cholo City Code. Mr. Brimhall?
Mayor and Council, good evening. Recreation staff has received reports from concerned citizens and athletic coaches about animal waste littering the city's athletic fields. Animal waste creates an unsanitary environment for those who use the fields for sports recreation. Staff surveyed other Arizona communities to determine if they had encountered similar problems and had enacted policies prohibiting animals on athletic fields. The results of the survey showed that slightly over half, six out of 11 municipalities have adopted policies restricting animals on athletic fields. Of the remaining five municipalities, three are in the process of developing a policy to address the issue of animal waste on fields and the health hazards it presents. After discussing amending the city code to prohibit animals on athletic fields, the council, at the council retreat in October, staff met with dog park user, the Dog Park Users Group, and local dog event coordinators to discuss the proposed change. All parties expressed support for the amendment. Ordinance number 2018-8 adds subsection 17-3-3 subsection U under rules and regulations to the Parks and Recreation Chapter of the Cholo City Code. Changes are bolded and underlined. If council approves the ordinance, signs will be posted at each park and near athletic fields informing the public of park rules. And with that, here to take some questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have, Jay, and I know it's going to be hard to do, but as soon as this thing, if it passes, everything else, are we going to have people standing out there? Are we just, I mean, we can put a sign up, and people can read it, and they can ignore it? Are we going to have somebody there that can really, you know, stand there and say, "Hey, you can't be doing this stuff"? I mean, I like John, Councilman Leach's scenario, what happened, he was playing football on the field, and I like, I think everybody would like to hear that, but I think we need to, you know, try to, try to see what we can do with keeping them off the field.
Right. We trust our citizens to make good choices. I think, we think as long as it's posted, it gives us a lot better, puts us in a lot better position to be able to not have these incidents of these reports that we get from time to time, pretty frequently, usually during the summertime when kids are out there, a lot of animal waste being found. We feel if we can post it and inform our citizens that incidents of those reports will be diminished. That's what we hope.
Councilmember Leach?
So I brought this up at the retreat, and I have to figure it out again, so I'm going to go to our barbecue contest where we have people traveling around the country and doing nothing but barbecue, and they live in their motorhomes, and they have little dogs. Are you telling me that they can't come to the barbecue contest?
So if you read the ordinance, I actually have a copy of it right here. That's 17-3-3 subsection U.
Well, obviously, I didn't read that whole thing.
It says, "Dogs are not permitted on athletic fields, including, but not limited to, fields for baseball, softball, T-ball, soccer, football, and track unless specified elsewhere in this section, or as authorized by the city for special events."
Under special events, though, be able to have that, as long as we add that to their application when they-
Well, I just look at even farther, you know, you go to when we had the movies, I'm not sure if we have the movies in the park anymore, but we do. So when you have that, I mean, you can drive by the city ball field and see 30 dogs out there, so that'll be allowed if it's, the city approves it. And hopefully, there's people out there, I mean, you would think that many people out there, if you've seen somebody, I mean, we did it, and the guy ignored us.
Right.
So right in front of us, we did it. I mean, so I guess the people that do that are-
My personal feelings-
That don't pick it up is pretty crazy, but it does happen. They do it right in front of us.
Personal feelings, just like you said, Councilmen, there are lots of eyes on people, generally. The threat of being ostracized by people by not picking up your, your animals' mess is enough to get them to pick it up. I guess it wasn't, that wasn't the case with the instance that we're talking about, but hopefully, the more eyes, the better.
But you're right, if there's one or two, I would just like to see us go toward that agility part, too, if we, in the future, kind of look at a place for that, because the dog park's awesome, I mean, it really is, but you know, you get dogs running around out there, and they think they're having fun, and they, other ones want to attack them, so it's something to look forward to.
Hopefully, this can improve that situation that we have. Any other discussion, comments? And I, you know, I think it's good that you took this to some of the other dog, you know, clubs and different things, and we have their support. I think that's great. Thank you. Look for a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. By unanimous consent, I'm going to ask the city clerk if she'll read ordinance number 2018-08 by title only, since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, amending Section 1733 Rules and Regulations of Chapter 17, Parks and Recreation of the Cholo City Code.
Thank you. I'll look for a motion. Vice Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-08.
Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is item 8E, consideration of ordinance number 2018-09, amending Chapter 18 Streets and Sidewalks of the Cholo City Code by adding Article 18-6, placement of utility lines underground and adopting Resolution Number R2018-29, declaring as a public record the document titled Article 18-6, placement of utility lines underground in Chapter 18 Streets and Sidewalks of the Cholo City Code. Mr. Cupp and Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll start off and present the staff summary, but if you have any technical questions, I'll refer to Mr. Cupp on those. All right. October 30th, 2018 council retreat, staff presented information regarding the need for an ordinance change requiring new development to align with recent projects to move power lines underground. Some recent examples of where that was done was at the Public Safety Building, our Summit Healthcare Project, and the Arizona Public Service Project on the Deuce Club. In addition to aesthetics, overhead utility lines pose a health and safety hazard to the citizens of Cholo due to increased obstructions in the rights-of-way, increased safety hazards, and increased harm to animals and other wildlife. As indicated at the retreat, this ordinance would apply to new commercial developments and any redevelopment of a property that increases the cost or floor area by 50% or more than the original project. Placing utility lines underground in residential subdivisions is already part of the city code. This ordinance would also apply to any utility providers that construct new or upgraded systems, or any government agencies acting as a developer. Costs can be shared between these entities as part of a development project. The ordinance allows a developer to ask for a deferment if the project has a very small frontage that contains overhead utilities, or a waiver if placing utilities underground is cost prohibitive. The ordinance grants the Public Works Director the authority to make the initial decision, which can be appealed to the city council. The penalty for a violation of this ordinance for a first offense would be a civil violation. And all service lines are required to be underground as well. Though staff is available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments? I was just going to say, so this does allow a person, if it's a real hardship, does that come before council, or does it just come before city staff to determine that?
First, it goes to the Public Works Director and city staff, so he can evaluate it and see if it really is cost prohibitive, or, you know, look at the frontage and see what, you know, needs to be done. He may make a decision at that point that, yeah, it is cost prohibitive, and it wouldn't even come to the council. But the person has the option, if they don't like what the Public Works Director decides to come to the- So it gives them that opportunity to still-
Vice Mayor?
So along with that, Morgan, if this is going to be mostly set up for, like, utility companies or something like that, instead of just individuals, individuals might be able to go with Bill and say, "Hey, you know, I got rock," or something like that, it'll be easier to put that up, but mostly downtown or main corridors, or even secondary streets, we're still looking at putting everything underground? Mostly because we're putting everything downtown underground, and we're trying to keep everything down? Or are they going to have the ability on secondary streets, say, "I'm going to go aerial and do it that way"? You know, I, if we're going, if we're going to spend a lot of money to keep stuff underground on the main street, I think we need to do it throughout the whole thing.
It applies throughout the city, but it's mostly going to be on our main streets where the commercial development takes place. Again, on residential areas, it's already required to be underground for residential developments. And, you know, mainly, there may be some instances where if a person has a small frontage, we may defer it for a while, because then, when other people around him are developing, they can go in together, and it makes more sense to do it that way. So if a person has a very small frontage, he may come to Bill and say, "Can I defer that until my neighbors decide to go underground?" And then they can share in the cost, so it gives, it gives the Public Works Director some latitude to take those situations into account.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions? I'll look for a motion on this. Councilmember Crittenen?
I move to adopt Resolution Number R2018-29, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled Article 18-6, placement of utility lines underground in Chapter 18 Streets and Sidewalks of the Cholo City Code.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Hatch. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. This time, I'll ask the city clerk, because of unanimous consent, read ordinance number 2018-09 by title only, since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. In ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, amending Chapter 18 Streets and Sidewalks of the Cholo City Code by adding Article 18-6, placement of utility lines underground, and adopting that document titled Article 18-6, placement of utility lines underground in Chapter 18 Streets and Sidewalks of the Cholo City Code by reference.
Hey, we have, I'll look for a motion. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2018-09.
Have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is item F, consideration of approval of a five-year capital improvements program for fiscal years 2020 to 2024. That's getting out there, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Cholo is required by city code to have an improved five-year capital improvements program, CIP. CIP is planning tool to look five years ahead to plan and prioritize the city's needs. Program is administered by an advisory committee that consists of city staff, representatives from Planning and Zoning Commission, and city council, city council and a citizen representative. Prior to the advisory committee meeting, public notice is issued to seek recommendations for capital project requests. Every requister that provides contact information receives a written response from staff. The first year of the CIP 2020 includes any projects that were not funded in fiscal year 2019 budget. The 2020 projects are the committee's top priorities. However, it is understood that all of the projects cannot be funded. The budget process will be the final determinant of which projects receive funding. Only projects over $50,000 are included in the CIP. Smaller projects will be accounted for in each department's operations budget. Each project listed in the CIP has a detailed capital outlay project sheet, which identifies the project, its costs, potential funding source, and a timetable. Detailed cost estimates and maps are also included with the worksheets when appropriate. And this is basically all of the worksheets for all of the projects that are in the CIP. Staff held a preliminary meeting on October 22nd, and the advisory committee met on November 23rd, at which time the CIP was approved by the committee, it was not approved by the committee, it was approved for to move forward with a recommendation to council, I'll make that correction. Staff recommends that the council approve the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2020 to 2024, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about this? Councilmember Kelly?
I'd just like to say, for clarification to the public and all concerned, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, please, that this is a serious plan, is certainly nothing part of it, no part of it is cast in concrete. As the future reveals, finance, obligations, and challenges, and/or changes in circumstances, it will be adjusted by common sense and funding restraints. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir, you are absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Hatch?
I move to approve the five-year capital improvements program for fiscal years 2020 to 2024 for the city of Cholo.
Have a motion, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Kenny, that's the longest I've seen you in a meeting for a long time, bud. Appreciate it.
Bye, Kenny. You hard of hearing?
Next item is a summary of current events. I look to council members- I'd like the council members, or any summary of current events. Councilmember Crittenden.
Okay, I want to remind everybody that the Cholo Chamber of Commerce breakfast is tomorrow morning at 8:00 a.m. at Solterra. Anybody that's a, any businesses or whatever, that's a member of the Cholo Chamber of Commerce, I highly recommend that you go there. The breakfast is put on by a business group that is going to give a presentation. This particular group tomorrow is Kate Otto. The breakfast is free to you and it's a wonderful time to interface with other businesses. You get to stand up and, and give a short orientation about your business. And I would highly recommend that if you're a member of the Cholo Chamber, that you go there to interface with other businesses and other people. Okay?
That's it. Thank you, Councilmember Crittenden. Any other? Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everybody that worked and staff and everything else on the Christmas light parade. It was a great parade. It looked like there was over 30 floats in there. Had a great time and then also came down for the Christmas tree lighting right here in front of council chambers and city hall. And there was a lot of people there and having a great time. So, just want to thank for everybody that came out and, and did that with all of us here at the city. Want to thank also the Leach family for everything they did and the little presentation they did tonight. Nothing but great remarks of what the lights look like downtown and what's going on at the city. I had people just last night telling me, they really like what city and staff has done for the city downtown with the lights. And so, thank you to his family. I want to also thank ADOT for fixing a lot of the manhole covers in downtown Cholo. There's no zigging and zagging going on anymore.
Really, did they?
I want to thank, I believe it's ADOT that did it.
And the city.
And, and us help, okay. But, you know, at least there's no zigzagging across the lines to try to get bypassed the little dips and holes. So, and the last thing is I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year because it'll be after the New Year before we're back. Thank you very much for everything you guys have done.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kukavas?
I too would like to wish our community and our, our employees a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Hope it's all safe and you have a great year full of health and happiness and please express to the employees how much we appreciate your hard work.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Hatch?
I'd like to just take a moment and express my appreciation to city manager and the staff for your assistance with my term as Vice Mayor. I really appreciate that help. I appreciate working with Mayor and with the council members and your support. And I do appreciate this wonderful group of people we have up here. Couldn't ask for a better group of people to cooperate with one another. Thank you.
I'm just grateful tonight, just to share a little with the community, we have had an outpouring of thanks for the lights and for how Cholo looks at this Christmas season. And what a great night watching the parade and the Christmas light specials and things that were happening and just bringing the community together. When we put those lights up years ago, it's kind of neat that was able to find lights that would flash and, and change and, and beautify that during the Christmas season. I think it's just fantastic and hope that other businesses will continue to make our festivities here even greater for the White Mountains. I want to thank Vice Mayor Hatch for his service and for the opportunity we had to serve together and for him being on the council. And I just hope he'll continue to do great things on the council these next two years as well and say congratulations to council, our new Vice Mayor, Alsop, as well. And look forward to serving and working with him. Thank you, city staff, for what you guys do and all the people that have worked together and for the things that they do and the things that we have in our community. And I just want to say Merry Christmas and may you have a wonderful heartfelt Christmas and may it be a fantastic New Year as we come. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. While everybody's doing their thank yous, I want to put in a thank you to you, Mayor. Those people who have never done that job have no idea what it is. And I say sincerely, thank you for all the extra hours and what you do and what you're called on to do and for the Vice Mayor and what he's gonna do that he doesn't know yet. But he's got a pretty good idea and has already been expressed, our staff. I have been to meetings where the challenge was, what do you do in Cholo to get a quorum at a council meeting so you can conduct legal business? And when I told them, the few years I've been on the council, I've never noticed not to have a quorum. They almost call me liar. And the, and not that I want to see it diminish, of course, but I, I think we may set some kind of record in the state if we were ever checked as to the attendance in the meetings. And the council takes their job serious and their attendance in the meetings and their research serious. I appreciate working with this council for those reasons and the staff and how they threw the packets and information and history on issues we need to know. We, we come to these meetings having that information and I'm grateful for that. I thank you. I want to wish everybody in our community and surrounding communities a very Merry Christmas, remembering what it's supposed to be all about. And I can't help myself, so I'm going to throw it in. Now that NASA has spent millions and millions of dollars studying astrophysics, we know the real birthday of Christ is September the 26th. And so, just something to know, little trivia there. But be safe, don't be foolish in your celebration and dangerous and all come back to the New Year safe and wish everybody a prosperous and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Councilmember Kelly. Appreciate that. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few items to report tonight. The Cholo Regional Airport's hosting an open house this Friday, December 7th, from 11:00 until noon to unveil a model replica of one of the first aircraft to land in Cholo. The event's open to the public and light refreshments will be served. The model was built by one of our airport linemen with assistance with, from the Experimental Aircraft Association members. There's quite a few events still that's going to happen this month. I'm going to go over some of those. As you know, and has been mentioned, the lights and holiday decorations are on full display for Cholo Shines. We have several events. The second Santa at, and the shops at Gingerbread Lane is this Friday from noon to 6:00 and Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00 at the city campus gym, 620 East McNeil. The library is presenting a Polar Express night featuring reading of the children's book by Cholo Police Chief Joe Shelley and Timber Mesa Fire Chief Brian Savage with a visit from Santa on Friday, December 21st. Three half-hour sessions for the reading are scheduled at 6:15, 6:45 and 7:15. Keepsake tickets available at the library, are first come, first served and require, are required for children 12 years and younger. Our final event for the year is the Deuce Clubs drop on New Year's Eve, December 31st at Festival Marketplace. The festivities begin at 11:00 p.m. followed by the dropping of the Deuce Clubs at midnight and fireworks also will be at midnight. A reminder that the Aquatic Center remains closed for annual maintenance and will reopen next Monday, December 10th. We appreciate everyone's patience while we're doing that closure and doing some much-needed improvements at the Aquatic Center. We continue work, as we discussed some of it tonight, on several projects, including sewer upgrades in the Sierra Vista subdivision, roadway reconstruction on East Thornton and Westwood and road repairs around the city. After the holidays, you can recycle your Christmas tree from Wednesday, December 26th through Sunday, January 6th by dropping it off with all the decorations and lights removed in the designated area at Frontier Park parking lot on, north of Deuce Clubs on Ninth Place. The trees will be, then be taken to Nova Power and snowflake and used as biomass fuel. This is the last regular council meeting of 2018. We want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, safe and holiday, a safe and happy holiday season. We, the, since the first Tuesday in January is our, that's our usual council night, is on January 1st, New Year's Day. Our meeting has been rescheduled for January 2nd at 7:00 p.m. That'll be on a Wednesday. Thank you.
Any other comments? Scheduling of meetings, I think we've covered that. Don't have any new ones for the rest of the year here. We do have an executive session where we'll be discussing the appointment of the city magistrate and the employment agreement, as well as agreement for acquisition, acquisition, sorry, of AP numbers 210-16048C and D and number 039 and the executive minutes of October 16th. Need a motion to move into executive session? I have a motion by Councilmember Leach, second by Councilmember Hatch. All those in favor? Any opposed?
He didn't say.
See that pass seven to zero. Thank you for being with us tonight. At this time, we'll move into executive session.